I'll be your, be joining the budgeting. Download your, move your hat, uh, stand as it.
One of the agents to be applying to the United States for men. To the Republic of Michigan stands. One nation under God, made of this one.
Thank you.
Victor Hill?
Here.
Trustee Abby, there, clerk's squire.
Here.
Trustee Newton is absent and treasurer Hoover is present.
Thank you. Okay, uh, number one on the, uh, the agenda is Jim Anderson. I have asked for a review of the consulting services and results of that review. Uh, Jim.
Morning.
Great.
Your office. Yeah, it's very nice. Uh, getting a quote.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to do it, but.
Okay, um, anyways, I, I brought the, uh, original letter from back in July of twenty three to sign for refresh. You know what? I started the intended to do here and then kind of what we left. There was four areas that were in the original agreement or letter of understanding that I started with last, uh, July, which the immediate issue was the reconciled general ledger, the bank accounts. This would have been through March of last year to correct the figure on it. Secondary issue was recital general ledger bank accounts to date. Third one was to try and establish a system of the clerk of the treasurer to ensure that your reporting was accurate and timely, which would include the bank reconciliations, payroll reporting, monthly reports to board, budgets. And then the last one was, um, assist you in conversion of the S and A. Yeah, so when I started, and this is kind of a recap last year, uh, we either realized that there was, or I did, that there was more to this because there was some uh, reporting on payroll that was, uh, delinquent and need to be taken care of and just a lack of system there. So that's what we attacked first, what I did, and, um, I'm happy to say that as of, you know, uh, last fall, that's been right, but I have not had to correct any reports, I haven't had to redo them or find that they had not been done, uh, so for two thousand twenty and twenty-three and today we haven't, I think we're, that system is now where it should be. That's all that for Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. So, um, the bank reconciliation process, that was a, that was a bigger product, project, and, uh, I am happy to say that as of right now, you are reconciled through March of two thousand twenty-four. You, uh, are ready for your audit as far as I can tell, uh, we just, the records have to be pulled together for the auditor, but you are now ready. Um, we have a process where it's getting done monthly now, um. I'll be working on the able stuff and, uh, I guess this is at the discretion of the board. At this point, that is the one part that I probably will continue to do unless you tell me differently because right now we don't have, um, we don't have the, uh, expertise to do it. And at least until the next election. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to put that, but I, it's in, I created an Excel template. You, you have, uh, QuickBooks that's being done in the treasurer's office in conjunction with the cogitate system that you have. Uh, and that works, I guess, for their purposes, uh, that was kind of disbanded immediately after, uh, your treasurer was elected in or appointed and that process linking that to the cogitate hasn't occurred since. So there's still, to my knowledge, still using QuickBooks internally there. I'm not, for doing your bank reconciliations, I created an Excel template that I would say would continue to be used until you convert to B S and A someday, even then it might still be used to certain extent, so, um, that process is working, the problem is, uh, you don't have someone that can do that in-house at this point, so, um, that, unless you tell me differently, I'll probably continue to do that on a monthly basis until something changes. The, uh, the general ledger activity, I think we've got that kind of tackled, I'm, I'm I guess spot checking and I'm also been working at the discretion of the board to help you with some of the budgeting processes that you've done. Uh, and I'll continue to do that again at your discretion. I'm not going to be proactive and in that it's really up to you as supervisors to say, Jim, I, I need you to come in for me, otherwise I'm not going to, but I will still take a look at the general ledger because I'll be doing the bank recs. I can still see if there's something that looks, uh, whack, um. Uh, the, uh, so as far as I'm going, I, we tackled a lot of that and it's more of a monitoring situation as far as a general ledger, but the, uh, the bank rec, it's gonna have to properly continue doing what we're doing and, but it'll be a lot more efficient if we're caught up. There's no, we have, I've given journal entries to the clerk, they've been made. So when you begin into June of, uh, two thousand twenty-four, all that stuff that was being carried forward as the reconcile is gone, I've given instructions for the treasurer to consolidate the bank movements to be made. My knowledge, Larry did that last week, so that, yeah, those are the two parts that were needed to get the reconciliation back in sync, now, we're just gonna have to continue to monitor that each month. The last thing was the conversion, I, you put your predecessor, uh, Larry or, uh, Dave, Dave, I guess with, with you and the board decided to hold off on the B S and A conversion, which is probably a wise move. I would say the target for that, if we're gonna do that, would be maybe as effective April first, two thousand twenty-five with a initiation starting sometime in early twenty-five, January, if you're gonna make that move, I think that if you don't, you can still move forward cogitate, um, it's not, cogitate's a little bit cumbersome, but it, it's still working. So I guess that's a decision that we made prospectively, but I think that you're, you're in track to be able to do it sometime and have it in, in place, April first of two thousand twenty-five, if you choose to do so. So questions for me?
Not, not any question in particular, uh, at my side of the fence here, I've been doing some business process, looking at and trying to measure, you know, the general ledger piece for, you know, making sure that we're, you know, understanding what we're paying the bills, where they're coming out of appropriately, and that employees are actually, uh, doing what's in the policy manual regarding whether it's revenues or expenses, so that these two offices are able to identify what those things are with proper account numbers instead of just tossing an invoice into the clerk's office and let them try and figure out what it was purchased for or otherwise, so. Just working on the business processes on mine, I do share your opinion, um, I think the S and A is a conversation for uh, down the road, uh, I'm afraid if we start something brand new, you know, it's, it'll just be, it, it won't be as well on that end, so. Uh, so far, yeah, I, I, I concur with you, I think you've done a wonderful job on getting this thing back to the least where you might be able to have our order properly and on schedule and on time this year, so. Do thank you very much for that, for the audience, uh, given, it has been an absolute godsend trying to get this thing kind of back on the, back on the rails, as you know, in April, I came to the meeting at the work session, I wanted to make sure, you know, that this was, this is not just something internal, everybody, the public needs to know, it's been a problem. Uh, the, the, the problem originated on that reconciliation when, when, when the treasurer's office did not continue a particular program uh, using it, uh, for reconciliation, as Jim alluded to, and there's a, obviously, there's a myriad, there's a cogitate and there's a QuickBooks and, you know, you had to create really your own, if you will, and, and you've done a masterful job of getting that done, and at least from my supervisor's perspective, I, I mean, it's been a great comfort to me. Uh, I currently, as, as of yesterday, began looking at the way we present our budget for assumptions and I'm learning, uh, things along the way as I ask for transaction reports. And so I'm, I'm literally asking those questions, I mean, that money go into there, something has been moving there two years, all of a sudden it still appears and invited. So I'm, I'm working on that end of it, uh, and more so for the public than for Jim, um, to try and make sure we kind of rope this thing all together into business processes, certainly now.
But I think, I think your reporting now, when, because I reviewed your trial balance in March and there's obvious adjustments that the auditor's gonna make for receivables for the taxes and so on, but the, but, you know, I, I'm pretty confident that your reporting is, is back on track to where it's, where it should be, and I think that, I think what you're doing this part is taking a hard look at the, uh, the processes that you have within your, uh, township is a good idea, uh, because I think, uh, you've had turnovers and I don't think that that part has been done in a while and it's probably, uh, it's a good move. Uh, the idea that I have is that, you know, um, running the QuickBooks is a duplication of what you already have and the most efficient thing would be this work with one and make it work. I think, you know, Lisa, to her credit, did a wonderful job as a treasurer, I, you know, I was your auditor before and I used to enjoy coming there doing the audit because it was one of the few townships that I could come into tax account and it literally had no adjustments, I mean, right to the pen, that's rare for, for a township. Uh, but I think she put a lot of effort in because of the cogitate versus, uh, QuickBooks and, um, I think there's a way to go about this, using just the Quick, or the cogitate and not having to spend all your time re-entering those, because you have to, that's not automated, they're typing every check in there and that's prone to error too, it's just human. So if you could take and use the system that's already established and you've got your database there and has worked on that. Problem there is just lack of knowledge of how that works, you know, the cogitate system has always been more on the clerk's end and not the treasurer's end, treasurer uses the S and A to do the tax collections and then that gets then posted into the cogitate in one of some, you know, form, uh, and so someday if you end up having the S and A across the board, that'll all be automatic, but then that has its own sense of issues too. So a lot of people think that old B S and A is gonna be pushy button, it's gonna dissolve all my problems, it's not, it's gonna have new ones, but it is a good program. Uh, I got a lot of clients that use that, it's just, it, but it's expensive. I don't remember what your price tag was, but I wanted to save us thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to, you know, make that conversion. Yeah, so when you do it, you wanna do it right.
Well, yeah, absolutely, and, you know, and it's like any other system for private or garbage in, garbage out, so we gotta clean up our garbage before we can.
I, I think, I think for the most part you're there, you're, 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 you're quite, I'm pretty confident when I'm doing the bank recs and since, the ones that were, I did since like, uh, September twenty-three, because I started in July, so there was problems that were systematic that I, we started rectifying, but I'm not having issues with checks that are being generated in the clerk's office and not being on the general ledger or anything really payroll related up there. You've had a few payrolls that there's corrections, but that's, that's normal, you know, somebody gives you a time card and misread, that's normal business, but I'm saying as far as the process, that, that's very back to, I think.
Yeah, but and I also put out, I think it's effective, uh, June eight's payroll, I believe it is, there are a brand new time cards, uh, that are more descriptive and less prone to potential error in the clerk's office, or, you know, assumptions that were made with, within or trying to read someone's card. Um, I had the opportunity to look at a couple of them there and, and I can understand why we're having some difficulty, so we've, we've done that, I corrected that. Um, and, uh, you know, but other than some internal, um, employees grumbling, if you will, because we're, we're moving the cheese a bit, but we'll get there, um, and, uh, I'm committed to get there and make sure, and we appreciate you. Any more members, uh, have any questions at all from Jim?
No, just wanted to say thank you. Anywhere, we're raising out of all.
Is, uh, there, uh, this is the work session, uh, is there any audience that, member that needs a clarification at all because this is, this is our problem in your township was created and it's all on us, our responsibility to fix it. I wasn't here, but I'm committed to fixing it. So any more, any other, uh, audience members got anything for, for Jim, we, we are, we're just blessed to have him in our community and, uh, and to agree to get us, you know, moving forward, so. Jim, I'll tell you, I don't see you handing up, so I'll tell you like I tell everybody else, this is your jettison point, if you'd like to leave, that's fine. And it's no hard, no follow, uh, and you don't have to fit through the next eighteen items, so.
Yeah, uh, unless you have a question that relates to those, I am, I think.
Yeah, we're, we're good and I don't see any, okay?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, also one note before we move on, uh, I was neglecting this morning, obviously, I didn't get my correct cups of coffee. Um, we do have a number nineteen for y'all, it's called review of the L four, forty twenty-nine form, that's a tax rate request for July one, the twenty-fourth, it's a formality that we have to do with the county, um, with Jacob Houghton. So we're gonna, that is number nineteen, it's, it's boilerplate, it's just has to be done by that date and then if there's any bill exchanges or otherwise, we, we have to do an amendment to that, which is done every year, if it's current, so. On to number two, we have Tony, that's actually representing Terry this morning. Tony I, for those of you that don't know him, he is the, uh, he is our township maintenance, uh, individual there, so when you see the cemetery, all nice and moated, everything else done around here, pickleball courts, uh, you know, put the nets up and things like that, that's Tony, and, um, Tony, um, I hate to tell you, but you need to push that microphone button so it's green and then you gotta. So.
So Tony, Tony is here to discuss, uh, a couple of things, one of them is, is as I told you at previous meetings, you know, we, we, the cemetery stuff, costs of the cemetery keep building up, uh, with, uh, with costs to our subcontractors or otherwise. And so we have, uh, uh, a couple of things on the cemetery fee schedule and then Tony, I understand, is going to talk about, uh, his needs down there on the tractor piece, so Tony?
Yeah, thank you, I apologize, it wasn't, I failed to put anything together for you in writing, but I I got, you know, steel trap as a brain, so, um, but I did get some pricing on there. Okay, one, uh, when we talk about the fee schedules, if I'm not mistaken, on the form right in front of me, but I'm pretty sure what, what Terry was hoping to do is that we kind of start restricting, uh, we, you know, um, slim down the fee schedule, the one in particular was, um, an internment and then without, uh, without, uh, a formal ceremony. Uh, there's a, it, it's, um, good reasoning to eliminate that completely because what we're gonna do and we'll, we'll end up, um, we should only have one fee because a family can run a funeral this as long as if there is a minister that should. So a formal thing, so, um, that should, really shouldn't be there. And I think the other one was about a grading on the, uh, um, stones in the, um, calaverium. Um, I think that was more an informational piece, that this is what it costs us currently and this is what we're charging. And if we shouldn't reevaluate that for an increase, again, with the idea of, of, uh, of trying to not so much generate you know, buku revenue, but be more consistent with what, you know, with, um, what we should be collecting additional to what the costs are.
Yeah, I believe, uh, in discussions with Terry, it's currently listed at two hundred and twenty-five dollars, our cost went up from our vendor. Um, and, uh, his suggestion was to move it to two fifty so that we're, we're, we're still within what we should be making here, I will, or, but as previous. It's not a huge, it's, it's a twenty-five dollar, but it is an adjustment to the fee schedule. And you're correct, you wanna do, uh, eliminate the internet without service, internet, inter, internment, excuse me, without services, uh, and make it one, one whole charge, or one charge as, as, uh, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and that's, that's, that's what's on our playbook for that.
And I don't see anything else that needs to be discussed at this moment without doing a little more research, but there's a couple of other options down the way, but it's probably not anything without.
Okay, tops ahead. And as I said in previous work sessions, um, we're going through these fee schedules and these, our legacy costs are just going up because costs to us are going up. So we need to look at all of those fees and services that we do that have historically haven't been moved much and we need to make sure that, um, you know, we're paying our costs along the way and not going in the hole, uh, those things are, things when you go to do a budget, you're like, where did that go? And I assure you, the winter legacy costs, repetitive fees, things like that, so, Tony, thanks on that, all the traffic.
Okay, um, we budgeted this, uh, past year, um, what, five thousand dollars for a zero turn, turn mower specifically to be used in the cemetery. Currently, we're using a fifty-two inch, um, uh, mower deck underneath our John Deere tractor. Um, what we would have encountered over the years, now eight years of been doing it, is that the John Deere is not the most efficient piece of equipment for the cemetery, one's quite a bit slower, um, the way that the cab has been installed on it, and again, that, those could be removed, but there's, there's a cost and, and you got extra stuff, anyway. Um, it overheats pretty regularly and, um, and, and it's not, it's not either fast nor precise. So currently we have a sixty-inch tour here on this campus and we use it um, around here quite a bit, it's a fine piece of equipment for a lot of things, except that you can't use down at the cemetery. It's too large. So what, what we, what we, our hope was this year was that we would be able to purchase forty-eight inch zero turn with the options to be able to add a bagger to it down the way for a lead collection and everything down at the, um, cemetery and also so it can be used back here around this building specifically, not so much in the field, but around the building. But again, um, that's only if necessary. Um, problem is five thousand dollars to deny, do anything more than give us a high-end residential unit. And we did, you know, once, at first I thought we'd be fine, I said, you know, I, when we bowl for two and a half hours or so a day, shouldn't be a problem and almost everybody, one, one company didn't say much to, uh, say that it wasn't gonna be good enough but, or the machines weren't strong enough for it, but the John Deere dealer down West Ranch, kind of statewide, I said that those units are not designed, but just for a few hours per week. Right, so what we'll end up with, and I did forum research and everything else and found out that yeah, within a couple of years you start having things break on just because of continual issues. Commercial units, higher gauge steel on the decks, um, better, uh, police systems and, and it's more integrated. Now, the good news is I have a wide variety of price. So, um, made some phone calls, got, actually got back to Bad Boy, wow, uh, outdoor equipment co in Holton Lake selling, uh, a series of mowers, Bad Boy mowers, the, the brand is not relevant other than the fact they're all good units, um, and, um, high of a commercial end usage. They can, they can, they can provide us with a commercial unit, their low-end commercial unit, forty-eight inch with the deck on sixty-eight hundred bucks. The Yardbird equipment in Holton Lake, they are, um, uh, sellers of grass hopper units, again, uh, high-end, uh, uh, more a higher-end commercial unit. Um, forty-eight inch side discharge with the ability to put the thing on for right around eight thousand dollars and John Deere down in Vader, down in, uh, or not Vader anymore, um, Hudson down in West Ranch, um, is about ten-three for their nine-hundred series John Deere. Again, all of them have the capabilities of having, uh, hitch put on the back of them. We might have to put some weight in on the front for it, we did really heavy hauling, but we're only talking about a small trailer, uh, yard trailer for dirt, so it shouldn't be an issue, two hundred and fifty pounds is about what it can haul to. And all of them have the ability to put the side discharge, baggers on them, we, but that unit, the, the bagger units themselves are right around eighteen hundred dollars for any one of them. So that's where you end up going from, you know, sixty-eight hundred to about eighty-five to ten to twelve. So our request was, could we look at that budget number and find the ability to increase it to allow us a, even if we had to stay within a ten-thousand-dollar range, that would at least allow us two of the three units to seriously look at, and we have looked at all of them, I've had, um, demos done um, for a number of them, so. Uh, we have had it down in cemetery, but we, you know, we've seen it in the marina, we've seen it used in other places.
Okay.
And that's the request that I have, um, I think Terry and I were, were coming to and requesting, if there's a way we could have that number increased so we could purchase that this year.
Okay, um, so my question to you would be is, can you get us, you guys get us something, um, together for both of our lives? As they, so that we can look at it and then, uh, between now and next one, that work session, um, we'll, uh, get some attention internally budgetarily, uh, we'll take a look and see, you know, where we may be able to, uh, I appreciate it, if you will.
And we may have some budgetary numbers right now for some other work, for some maintenance things around here, that we might be able to use that equipment money for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll do that then, so for, uh, to some of the, uh, coming this morning, we'll, we'll be moving forward Tuesday night with the cemetery fee schedule, uh, to officially approve the recommendations there. And then, uh, for today, uh, if you'll, um, get that stuff and work with Terry to get us visuals, if you will, there, uh, for your proposal, uh, then we can, uh, look at that and agenda that in our work session in July, so fair enough.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Thanks, any other questions for Tony, guys?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
You won't need me the rest of the day?
I do. I didn't say that, but you, but again, I'm gonna give you a jettison button.
They're on the payroll, yeah, get that to work.
Okay. Thanks, Tony, you're good, appreciate you. Uh, we're on to number three, Marina, uh, report highlights, Ross, I see you have all the audience here, Ross, welcome this morning.
Good morning.
Ross, I have, I have one question. When are you gonna bring the weather in so we can actually use those?
That wasn't in the job description.
Yeah. No, it wasn't, is there anything else that we didn't list here you gotta do?
Well, yeah, speaking of the weather, um, basically the, uh, the first couple of items on the report here are, are numbers of sales, uh, those are obviously down from last year.
Yeah, can you come in and help my, how much right now?
I, I don't, my computer was down, um, a dozen days ago, finally got it working and, um, I will get this, I can get those.
We usually know it's down.
I know it's down, the, the eye test just dealt me, it was way down from last year, we had beautiful weather all weekend, uh, Memorial Day weekend last year, um, and not so much this year, so we're down considerably, uh, but those are things you can't control. Um, so moving past those, uh, sales numbers, um, also would like to recommend hiring three additional high school students to fill mostly our weekend, um, slots, uh, staffing slots, um, over the summer. The employees want days off or family events, things like that, so that gives us, uh, a lot better flexibility in scheduling and having having enough coverage for our needs. Um, also gives us three more people that'll have some experience next year, so if there's any turnover, we have some experienced people to, to call on for next year. So I would recommend hiring these three, uh, people, I've talked with them. They're all interested in working, um, they. They're all interested in working. Um, they all know somebody that's uh either in the community or a current employee, so they all, they all check out very well. Uh, the next item, the fuel pump, um, CPU board and all the circuitry. Is obsolete. The uh the board maker no longer produces those or supports them. And there are none to be had. Um, if that, and 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 the reason. The reason, the reason we found this out is because the Tuesday morning before Memorial Day, the pump wouldn't start up. It was the night after, or the morning after, I think it's thunder shower the the night before. Um, uh, after two days of uh Northern Pump trying to get it going, they're there to reset the CPU board in there. The problem there is there are no, none of those boards to be had anywhere, so if that pump, if that goes down and it can't be uh reset. Then we're out of business, out of gas business.
I think so.
Um, I I contacted Northern Pump, um, they gave me a quote on a new new pump at thirteen thousand three forty-seven. Um, that's just worst-case scenario. Um, if if we need it, we know what it's gonna cost.
Is Northern Pump?
They, 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 yeah, they, they install, they install the lines every spring and and every fall hook up our pump in the, in the springtime. They're the ones that. Mainly in service our, our pump, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Um, we've also got another company in. Believe they're in Midland that that we use from time to time also. And I talked to them, they confirmed that there are, there are none of those boards to be had, so. So we're, um, it's something I probably should look at down the line, um. Yeah, I, I, I. Sent them a uh email asking what the uh the lead time on a, on a new pump would be, and I haven't heard back from them yet, so.
Can you relook at your budget right now and do you know which line you're gonna take this way? And they're, they're asking us to.
I would believe, uh, if if necessary, probably contingency right now.
Of a contingency nature because you didn't project it.
Correct.
Obviously. So that's where I need to go to.
Yeah.
Look and see what.
It's, it's just, it's just that this may, may or may not be coming to the end of its useful life. We don't, you know, we have no way knowing.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, I'm just making it down.
Okay. Um, and that's about it. Um, we also got our, we, Tony was talking about lawn mowers. We've got ours in the shop uh with a head gasket. Replacement going on, so that was, we had the same problem. It was overheating and cutting out after twenty minutes and. That addressed the, the cost of a new one like we have is about four thousand dollars, so I think six hundred dollars in case it is well worth it.
Okay. I just look forward in the future. We need to be, we're doing commercial work, um, and we need to be starting to buy commercial things. We gotta stop stretching residential pieces, uh, because you're just gonna pay good money after bad because of the. Use that is, that it's open, so just when you, when you think about those things, please think about that long-term. Uh, as opposed to the nickel-dime approach, you know, and not that I want to be an exorbitant spender, I guess. I want to make sure we're making the right purchases, not based upon how cheap we may be able to go get it, you know. And I seem to be finding a lot of that with our infrastructure. Um, we underpurchase, we don't purchase. With long-term legacy thoughts, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, is that something in the, is something you're looking that you need in in?
No, we, uh.
In June's meeting or what's, what's, what are you requesting? Uh, the.
I, 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 this is, this was more informational. I don't, I don't believe we need to replace it right at this moment, but if.
Yeah, when it's done, done, it's done.
When it's done, it's done, so I I believe.
And then you wouldn't be able to solve your.
Correct. So if your waiting is done, it's done. You're gonna lose money more than the thirteen thousand dollars that it's worth. So the question is, is if we have the money and it's in contingency, should we proactively get this done? That's what I'm asking you. If we check in, contingency looks good, is, uh, this should be a, should this be a Tuesday night deal here? Uh, what's, what's?
Uh, yeah, I believe it should, you know, we've got Fourth of July.
Just, just tell me.
Yeah, oh, I think.
He was manager.
I, I believe we should.
Okay.
I believe we should have.
Uh, very, we're, we're, we're gonna agenda this.
A way to know when, uh, how long that's gonna last.
Okay, so we're gonna agenda that for Tuesday night.
Okay.
Um, if you could just bring us a, a great piece of documentation for the number you just gave.
Sure, yeah.
The order of all, so we have it for our records to memorialize whatever, why we do what we do. I would appreciate that. Any other board members, some questions for Ross? I've got so for you, I have. Uh, obviously, they're, they, you're requesting to hire those folks on a seasonal basis. I presume that's incoming wage. Um, and you, I see you have all cleared them through the police department and obviously it's not, it's hiring pending physical drug screen. For those three people, so I have that for you and we will have that fuel pump. Uh, situation or excuse me, or the pump, the pump replacement on the agenda. And the only thing you owe us between now and Tuesday is something that, you know, the piece of paper.
Okay, that's what you'd say.
Very good. Any other questions for, for Ross? Perfect. Great for middle of the.
Oh, I hope.
And, and I will.
Not only today or tomorrow.
And, and I am interested between, obviously now and and maybe next week, we see each other in orbiting or something there. Could you give us some indication on what percentage we are now going into so that, you know?
Yeah, I just, I needed to get into the, into the clover through the computer because we don't keep the record on the machine.
It's only because knowledge is power, so I'd like to have some knowledge. Appreciate that, Ross. Thank you for all you're doing. Again, you can jettison as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Morning. Morning. Just so everybody knows, I've asked all of the agencies to kind of give us highlights, so we can move on through. They do a great job and and kind of Shersky is uh continuing to do, I know, what I did in a very thorough job. And so he always has thirty-five items on that thing and I just want to highlight today, so thank you. We know you do great work and. You always make the documents available. We can make those available to public. If anybody ever questions those things, so thank you.
Right, but I learn from the best, so.
There you go.
Uh, I've, I've got to narrow down to maybe ten or twelve things off to this. Um, first is number four, um, this month I met with Officer Shersky. And reviewed his restricted duty as according to the policy. Um, I have not extended Officer Shersky's restricted duty just because of his treatments and things. He wasn't um really able to come in because he wasn't feeling well, so um. Decided to not extend that restricted duty for him. Um, so at that time, he had requested to go on FMLA, uh, which began on May sixteenth. Um, Officer Shersky advised me that he was planning on using his annual leave time and vacation time for the FMLA. Then once that time runs out, uh, he was planning to go to short-term disability, which I provided him with the paperwork. Um, Officer Shersky had filled out the paperwork for the FMLA and uh. I advised him to get the short-term disability paperwork in before June eighteenth, um, because that's when his FMLA is going to run out. I did follow up with him this morning and he said he has the short-term disability paperwork in with his doctor right now. And it should be getting into you shortly for that, so that's an update on that. Uh, number five, uh, this month we had a citizen request additional no parking signs being placed on Maplehurst Road near Timber Trail, which is a private road. Uh, down towards the Maplehurst Road end. Uh, his request was due to parking issues in the busy summer months of subjects parking too close to Timber Trail on Maplehurst. The citizen expressed concern that it is a hazard and makes it very difficult to pull in and out of Timber Trail if you have a truck or trailer. I met with the road commission who advised me that they checked all the no parking signs around Maplehurst and they all. Are all in place there. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to the board to see if they wish to pursue the issue any further for additional no parking signs there? Or how, how you'd like to proceed with that?
Well, the road commission hasn't. It wasn't even more. I'm sure it says the road commission doesn't agree with the need or.
Uh, there's, there's enough signs down there for the no parking. Um, what the kind of the citizen was requesting was some of the signs right by Timber Trail that said do not park in between these signs. Um, in my opinion, I think we can handle it with the um state law. Of parking within fifteen feet of an intersection, and I've already advised officers to, um. Try to step up the enforcement in that area. So I, I think, uh, adding additional signs isn't going to help the cause. Um, like I said, I've already have the officers keep an eye on that area this summer. And uh I can follow up with the citizen and advise them on that also.
Yeah, I think that's what was approved, but to uh having engineered all those years ago and codified to the state. Uh, there was a formula that would use the essentially one hundred and twenty-five feet up from the lake shore. I understand what they're talking about, but I think that uh there's, we park it within fifteen feet of the. Uh, of that particular road is probably the answer to that. Step up the enforcement effort into it, it won't take much before the word gets around. Uh, that's, I, I would prefer myself if we just did that first, okay?
Yeah, good. That's kind of what I mean. Like I said, I'll follow up with that citizen and advise them of that. Uh, number eleven there, uh, Curly Community College announced the restart of the extortion, which I brought to you uh last month. Uh, I, since then, I have received the membership packet and reviewed it. And uh looking forward, I think we are gonna join and try to get that program back up and running. Uh, it was always beneficial in the past. I know and the funding had kind of run out for it, so I'd like to try to reboot it. Uh, so I'll give a update on that after, but we've had the, the June third membership meeting. Um, I can fill you in really quick on that, but also down next month's uh work session, uh. They were originally looking for a start date of July first. Um, and we decided that need to wait till January first, so it coincides with the start of the. Um, alert, which is the annual law enforcement repression training, um, grant that they applied for. Um, so it looks like we'll be uh starting January first for the extortion. And I'll get that membership packet in by, I think the new deadline is now December first. So uh I'll keep you updated on that in the future. Uh, number thirteen, uh, this month I was contacted by State Representative Ken Board's office. Who wanted to set up a time to present for retired chief of a tribute in recognition of his many years of service in public safety. Uh, the uh June board meeting didn't work out for them, so. Uh, next month, just kind of have it on your radar at the July ninth regular board meeting. Um, be looking to do a presentation and ask for a spot at that meeting. I believe it's also gonna be with the Senator Okega's office as well. They, they, they do something together, so uh we'll be looking for that at the July meeting. Uh, number fourteen, this month I attended a Microsoft Teams meeting put on Michigan Commission, put on by Michigan Commission of Law Enforcement Sanders and Coles. Which included several key topics include a pilot project they're starting in twenty twenty-four for continuing professional education funds. Every full-time equivalent will receive five hundred dollars and be required to complete a minimum of twelve hours of. Uh, professional, for the continuing. The continuing professional education uh classes. Uh, in twenty twenty-five, they're looking at upping that to a thousand dollars and twenty-four hours of C P E. Uh, these funds are separate from the three oh two funding that we currently have for the MJDC funds. Um, there will be more to come on that in the future. Just kind of wanted to give you guys a heads up about that. Uh, number nineteen, uh, Undershare Flow had contacted me and he was submitting a grant to the. U S Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. For the Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act. In the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a two-year period, the grant would drastically expand our uh E A P services for employees. Through the grant, Undershare Flow was able to include other local agencies and officers, including uh our department on the grant. Uh, in support of that, I had authored a letter for Undershare Flow, which I attached to the work session report for uh you guys to look at. Uh, and I checked with them the other day. You guys haven't heard anything back on it, but not expect to hear anything until uh I go over. And and just so you know, the mental health piece is still um as bad as it has been. Um, some of us is really changing with that or getting better. Um, number twenty. I continue to work on the Fourth of July planning for this year at the South State Park. Uh, I met with the. West County County Road Commission Manager Roger Sexton to discuss the placing of cones, signs and temporary traffic control orders. To amend and to amend, amend existing traffic control orders to tollway zones. Uh, Roger advised me that the road commission does not want to place cones in the area of the South State Park as they believe it will cause more of a hazard than help. And they also believe that the cones will be damaged, so our thought of placing the cones is it's not gonna work out, it don't sound like. Um, the road commission, uh. Also does not have digital signs where we could put up. Uh, the ones that they use are from MDOT and uh MDOT is currently using those signs on the N fifty-five project. He was supposed to give me a price on what it would cost, maybe ran a couple of signs, but he has not provided me those figures yet. So it doesn't look like the signage piece uh over here at the park is going to work out also. Uh, we, we discussed about having a temporary traffic controller put in place to extend the no parking area, which would be. Uh, basically from Conroy one hundred up McKenzie to the existing no parking. And then from McKenzie Road to the existing no parking down near the Cut River. Uh, I have attached an email to the work session, which includes the procedure in order to do the traffic control. For the temporary traffic control order. Um. So I had asked if we could maybe look at doing that.
So that would be for the Tuesday night, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if you can make a, put that on the board meeting for Tuesday. And determine if the board wants to follow through with that.
Uh, Roger, Roger obviously is asking for that.
Yeah, the. Procedure for the temporary traffic control order is. Uh, the township would request the road commission do a safety study for parking in the area of concern, uh. Should also provide a markup map and the requested time period, which I provided the map. And uh some language for the, the requested time period there. And you can see on the map, the yellow would be from Conroy one hundred up McKenzie. Um, to the existing no parking there and then from. Uh, McKenzie to the existing no parking down here, the Cut River.
And so you're asking, obviously, for McKenzie as well, where no, it flows, it ends all the way down the lake. Yes, over the top, down to where the existing no parking signs are.
Correct.
Um, and you're asking for us to support the proposal of a temporary control order, or pardon, temporary control tactic. Or, or no parking signs in the defined area as given on the map.
That's correct.
That sounds like a summation.
Yes, and uh, like I said, I provided uh that they said we'd like that to be in effect.
Yeah, I got your letter.
Yeah, um, and then right the way Roger had explained it was, um, during the time period that it. That no parking is not in effect, they were just, they, they would put in, uh, posts. And then when it's time for the no parking, they will put no parking signs up and then. Remove them when they're done and just put reflectors on the signs or on the poles, so there's no sign there.
Okay, thank you for the work and that. Board members, you have questions on that particular issue?
So you're asking us to vote on Tuesday, is that, is that needs a vote from the board to, to put on Tuesday night to?
It, it does to the repair procedure for the road commission, because they now have to go, right, they'll go to his board.
Right.
And then get the consent for those pieces, and I know Ross has done a lot of the background. And then get the consent for those pieces, and I know Buzz has done a lot of the background work on it. Um and some have tried before out there um. And once again, as we just kind of say inside there, sometimes what they are. All fact that they'll be or not, I mean, my opinion is is that that, you know, till the till the district court that's serious about helping us. We start parking out there with serious fine money, uh you're just gonna have. Uh parking tickets that will go in and uh you know, get your same fifty-five dollars out the back door, which the township. Receives one-third of that fifty-five, which your patrol officers are making well more than that is standing there, so. But we need to do well, we need to do it, and if that's your recommendation, I'm not going to stand in the way.
I appreciate it, um and and just to follow up on that, the with the. Existing traffic controllers in place there, asked Roger about looking into posting them as a tollway zone. And he's unable to come up with anything that's would be able to amend that, so it doesn't look like that would be able to happen. Where we could legally tow the vehicles, um the only other option we have is to, if it's a hazard, we can tow them. By type law, right, um I'm I'm gonna try to meet with the uh district court judge and and get their opinion and. Clarification on it maybe and see if we might be able to still be able to do that, but I'll keep you updated on that.
Yeah, appreciate that, that I did, I know before I let talk to the visitor court there, they apparently this no parking ticket, the statutory thing. Uh been there, it comes out Supreme Court Administrator's office, although I. And once again, I'm sure if we want to hit our own more cool stuff, you could probably do more as you're in ordinance, but. But we worked for years trying that to, everything was done by those kinds of things, and then we needed to codify because. When you codify those for the audience, any police agency can write those tickets. Not to mention many of those that were done by the township years ago. Uh were not done correctly and we got those all reversed, Tim O'Rourke is in the office, I know I worked with him on that or in the the audience. On that, so, okay, that's something to do for that, I'll make a note here for a motion that to support your. Uh track your temporary traffic control order for the fourth of July event at the given date you gave us. Uh in accordance with the map as well.
Alright, thank you. Uh number twenty-one there, uh this month I assisted Sheriff Stern and. Uh Vanessa Barnard from E O C with the threat assessment walkthrough at the Roscommon County Road Commission Building. Uh I felt that was a good opportunity to learn the building and grounds for myself as a. Um Garrish is responsible of re-organization. At the road commission in the event that there is an A D I at either Holy Lake Schools or Charlton Heston Academy. Um so I thought it was really nice, they have a nice facility out there, learned a lot. Uh number twenty-two, this was this a little older item that I. Um wanted to bring up, but back in March, myself and Chief Hill. Had a meeting with the nine-one-one director Stringham at the time, along with other local law enforcement discussed after the fact decryption. On our radios, uh and then basically what that is, is the feds are beginning to push the state to have all radios encrypted. Which will in turn be pushed onto uh local agencies like uh Garrish Township Police Department. So with that being said, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that we are beginning to budget for new radios, beginning with the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Um the encryption piece is not looking to possibly take effect until twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty, from what uh. Uh Director Stringham had told us, um. So at that time, it would be wise to just purchase new radios, as the life span of our current radios would be nearing the end. And also the cost of. It would be more cost-effective to purchase new radios than to have them encrypted at the time. Because you, for one radio, it costs sixteen hundred dollars for encryption after the fact. Versus if you buy a brand new, you can have encrypted encrypted at that time. And then we would be in compliance with the uh encryption piece. So I just kind of wanted to let you guys know about that. Um and then number twenty-five there, just wanted to bring to your attention, uh Sergeant Mike Brannick assisted the Roscommon County Probate Court. With a transparent ju- juvenile offender for placement at a facility in Sioux. Um we're gonna be reimbursed for his uh time for doing that. Um they weren't able to get anybody else to do it, so we had uh stepped up and volunteered for that and it's. Be nice that we'll be uh getting reimbursed for that. And then uh number twenty-eight, uh this month we had the sunrise run, safety meeting. And P D for the sunrise coming up uh next weekend on June fifteenth, uh everything's in place for that, so we'll be uh. Uh having a quick briefing before the run on next Saturday for that. And this month, Lieutenant Labonte, administrative clerk, and myself had a budget construction meeting for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Um which I think we're good to go on that. And then uh thirty-four, which I see it's on the agenda here today, is just setting up a. Uh meeting for the twenty-five, twenty-six uh budget reviews, which I know we kind of shorted up a date for that. Uh that that's all I have, but just I do have one other quick question. I was looking ahead, um the next work sessions on July fourth. It's July third, okay, I just I hadn't gotten that update, so I wanted to see if we were changing the date, but that sounds good to me. Alright.
Anybody else have any questions, uh at all? No, don't see any, Buzz, thanks for the great job, you're doing wonderful over there, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And uh we'll we'll see how wonderful the budget meeting come.
Thank you.
Um the first page of the report, I'm gonna uncover a little bit about the differences in the report and what we're doing now and what we've been doing the last many years. Um in our activity report, we normally show any responses that we go on and any activities that we do have done over the month. And we've changed that up now to where the um EMS calls, fire and rescue calls are simply. Calls for emergency services, we've taken out public service calls, we've taken out um training and activities like that that were normally wrapped into that. And then the bottom of that first page shows our training and um and other um. Provided classes for other things, and so that used to be wrapped, some of that used to be wrapped into our numbers, so you will see our. Into the call numbers are gonna drop a little bit, but our list of um public service activities will increase. Um so we're we're right about average on our call numbers for the for the year, really, a little bit, little bit short, but I think that's related to taking those numbers out. We just talked about, and we we provided um. Three CPR courses for the Roscommon um um health class, the high school health class. It's um we're finding that the CPR courses are doing there plus the first aid courses are very beneficial for those those kids in the health class. And I know that the the school loves us coming and doing that, I think she's right. We uh we also provided a CPR class for the Ramona staff for the preseason. Um and the Girl Scout troop came in and toured our facility. And then I think you all know that for three, four days, we hosted the uh car seat technician course here in the building.
Yes, we did.
It looked like a used car lot at my garage for a while, so instead of trying to learn how to install car seats for our facility. I don't have revenues, so the treasurer's office has been kind of out of service this week, so I don't have revenues to report. Usually we get a report from that office at after the end of the month, and we reconcile that with our affiliate service. Um so I'll have that for next month. Um just community service, so I I'm part of Rotary and I attend Rotary for the township and we uh assisted with the Rotary auction. This year we raised um about forty-six thousand dollars um for the community, and that'll all go back into the community for. Community projects, that that was that was really, really good. Um normal things going on with meetings and those kinds of activities, um. Partner activities, so the website went live on Memorial Day weekend and it seems to be working well. There are several forms on there, so folks can go in and request services from us, such as installing smoke alarms and carbon dioxide detectors, getting a burn permit. Uh they can also request uh. Just to have a tour of the facility or they can just contact us with just questions. Uh so there's there's forms on there that that folks are able to use there, and then we have on that website, we have a cab. For the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration and the building proposal. Uh project as well, that has more detailed information um available to the public there as well. Our fit testing um for all fire and EMS staff has been completed this last month and then. All of our staff that were air packs that can go into hazardous uh fire situations. Have passed their their fit test for that, so they're able to wear their um S C D As. And we're working with um Drailing Homes and Occupational Health to schedule their physicals as well, um so annually firefighters are supposed to have. That breathing tests and chest X-rays and those kinds of things that that go along with the the kind of work we do. Our ZOa heart monitors, we have a heart monitor in each of our ambulances, our two ambulances, so we have two ZOa heart monitors. Their annual maintenance was done and they're in good health, which is really good to report because if we have to buy a new heart monitor, it's sixty thousand dollars. And um if we have to buy one, we have to buy two because I have to be the same. So when you look at my budget, you look at what I put into the EMS equipment line. One of those costs is is these heart monitors, and they're probably gonna be due in a few years. Technology changes, so then the heart monitors change, so then we have to we have to upgrade, and we've had these ones for quite a while. Um we have Brandon also uh applied for a state grant to purchase a second set of turnout gear for our full-time firefighters. There's an opportunity now, it's it's not required, but it's recommended that we have two sets of turnout gear for all firefighters, so that. When we have a fire, we get the the chemicals into our fire gear, we can get them, put them in the laundry and get them washed. And while they're in there, then we have another set in case we have another fire or something that we need them for, so. Um right now, the state's um has some money available for that, we've applied for a grant for that, which would be seven of us our full time. So we have hopefully seven new sets of of fire gear. Uh the building committee, we um continue to work on on that, we've been in contact with Representative Board's office, as we talked about last month. To look at some financial support from the state. I don't see it as being real promising, because a lot of that money that was available last year is not available this year because it was heart of funds. Yep, yep, that's always, we're a year late. Um so but we're still working on that with with his office, hoping to to find something there. Um we scheduled two public meetings for the building proposal, which will be on the ballot in on August sixth. So on Wednesday, uh June twenty-sixth and Monday, July twenty-ninth at seven P M. Will have uh public meetings at our station to address any concerns or questions the community may have regarding that. Um I've I've received, so we sent a flyer out about a month or six weeks ago to all the taxpayers in the township. Um telling them about giving the information about the project. Um since that date, I have received three, three emails, one phone call and three letters in response to the flyer. Um they're mostly asking questions, um trying to find out more information, and overall, they seem more positive than negative, there were some negatives, but. See more positive than negative to me. Um the nine-one-one director, um Van Stringham resigned his position this past month, he was on medical leave. Um F M L A leave for about a month, and then after that, he decided to step down. So I'm the chair of the nine-one-one authority board, and the board works closely with the county commissioners. And we report to the county commissioners on how the nine-one-one center functions. Um help with uh concerns there, so I've created a meeting quite often now since uh Vance has has resigned. The deputy director has only been there as a deputy director for a few months, and she's not, she's getting overwhelmed. And she has some personal things going on, so just uh this past week. The board and the commissioners and the personnel folks in the county have decided that she'll remain as a dispatcher. And continue to work there, um but take some of the load off of her as a deputy director and um Sheriff. Stern and uh county uh controller, uh Jody, um are going to oversee the operation of the center until we hire a new. A new director, uh Supervisor Hill has graciously volunteered to be on the interview.
I'm drafted, let's get it. I wasn't at any meeting and I'm not part of that one.
Yeah, I but I spoke well for you. So they're they're looking at uh applications now, postings out until the end of the month, and they're looking at applications. And hopefully they'll have a good candidate pool to pick from and try to get that job filled in July if possible. And then see where we go from there, but the dispatch center has been struggling a little bit, um one of the other dispatchers, um M F F M L A as well. So they're working overtime, there's a lot of stress going on, we brought back one part-time dispatcher. So anyway, I've been tied up with that question um those last months, trying to help with some of that. And then upcoming events, uh the sunrise on which Eric mentioned, um we'll be supporting that as well, our ambulance will be down in the park. Where the end of the race occurs, Biggin's Township has volunteered to bring ambulances over as well. And they'll be setting up here at the corner Robinson Lake Road and these things like drive to uh to be available if needed. Plus we'll be staffing the ranger following up the runners, and I'll be on that with one of our firefighters to to help if anybody has any problems there. And then fourth of July, as Eric mentioned, we're we're gonna be in there probably for three days straight, fourth, fifth and sixth. Because the fourth is on a Thursday, so we'll be in the state park. Um with at least one ambulance that time, we usually staff two ambulances during that time period, just because it gets busy. This year, we're gonna put in a first aid station so that we're not treating minor bumps and bruises in our ambulance, it'll be like a Band-Aid station. Um to kind of free up our ambulances a little bit there. Uh we're hoping to have the boats, the boats in the water, it's um it's a uh one sixty-two flight point, that's where we keep it. And uh it's available as well, so hopefully we can staff that about the water during that time. And then if our drone, it's available, if we have it purchased by then, we'll probably have that there as well, so that's a busy time for us. But then just a reminder, the seventieth anniversary on um. August, August third, our celebration, it's gonna be a good time, because they're coming together.
Yeah, just had one for clarification. You meant you're gonna have a public meeting at the fire hall, so it's not intended to be a public hearing.
Correct.
And so therefore, you know, board members are not required or anything, because if we're required, then we have to do both.
Most need to.
Whatever, uh okay, so you're, it's an internal, that you're opening up the fire station and you're gonna advertise that. And anybody who wants to, or the doors and the, okay, very good, this one.
So Terry will be there because he was on the committee, so as a board member, Terry will be there, so one more to be there if you want to. Not making it all the meeting that are, you know, for making that issue.
Okay, very good, I just wanted to know how to handle that in parallel there, that's all.
So I I drafted a flyer and Michelle looked at it for me the other day, so I got that, I haven't sent it out, Jen, I wanted to make sure we're clear on that before I send that out.
Okay, very good, uh board members' questions in general? Another another fine report, I do have to tell you that, you know, I appreciate the stress, you've pretty much taken off of my wife, who's doing CPR eighty. Uh for the mass citizen, since you got your folks trained as well, it's nice to diversify that community piece, and I'm glad you guys are picking those things up. Um I think all of it's a logical marriage and it's uh, and I would encourage anybody to go to any other township. Or session or board meeting and find departments like ours that do the community stuff we do, you simply won't find it, so thanks for what you did. Thank you, Eric, thank you too. Uh also, don't leave because we need to set these dates. So the the next item on the agenda is the um schedule of the P D fire EMS uh. Uh budgets, they're in a little different cycle than the general township, and they have to predict their stuff eighteen months out. So it's a difficult piece, but we're gonna do our best, so we. We first budget meeting, uh we're looking at June twentieth at one thirty. That's the first one.
Do you hear me?
We're asking, I'm looking for it.
Jim?
Oh, you, yeah, I'm good.
Alright, Jim's good, Eric's good, uh Ford, three fifths of one here, is that good? Alright, very good, so we'll set that for June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. All right, very good. So we'll set that for June twentieth, twenty twenty four. Right here, thirteen, or one, excuse me, one thirty. And then the second one needs to be in August. We did not previously discuss that one, uh so what's your pleasure, guys?
You're starting another meeting or a hearing?
Yeah, they have a public hearing in August. We have our our regular meeting for to discuss the work section, but we need that. Yeah, the hearing in August that usually occurs.
Usually goes on Monday, right?
Can't hear him.
Usually goes on a Monday, right?
Uh you, I think it was asked, that's what it was.
Like the twelfth?
My home is open?
Is that July?
August.
Well, it's good for me.
Also good for you. Good for the Chiefs.
Looks like it's good for me.
Michigan, or again, for the three fifths that are that are here, good? Yeah, those are the, yeah, that's the sixty block one, correct. Eric, evening. So we're gonna go with August twelfth at six five. Who wants to go first?
Doesn't matter to me. I'll I'll go first.
All right, so we'll go PD at six and we'll do six thirty fire. Good? Good to go?
I'll show up for yours, Eric, if you stay to my mind.
Don't take your money, you're all conscious. All right, sounds good. Um then we're moving on forward. Uh look forward to those. We'll get them out and announced on the uh the webpage and things like that uh here in the very near future. Okay, very good. Um we're ten, ten right now. Um and Jason, you want to do this, so we we get you out up here. Uh you want to do building, it's only, we'll wait and take a quick five.
I'm I'm waiting for it, so.
Yes, sir.
Now, I think we didn't do the uh
Oh, there's president.
We need to do that at the at the Tuesday meeting, except that rest.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Not mine, not mine.
Yeah, got that right.
Oh, that was banks, right?
Yeah, it was displayed on the.
Well, it just came in too late for the last board meeting, so that's, I'll make a note of that for number five uh for Tuesday. Go ahead, Jason.
All right, um just going over the May building zone report. Uh we had fifteen building permits issued, one of which was a new dwelling. We had eight electrical permits, five mechanical permits, four plumbing permits. Zoning wise, we had maybe six land use permits. We've got a meeting with the planning commission coming up for a rezoning of a piece of property and another site plan review. Uh total building and zoning receipts for the month was six thousand forty-seven dollars. Um ZBAs, we have not had one yet this year, which is kind of surprising. But uh it's, there's a couple of that I've talked to some people about, but no big word yet, so. And we're we're in. Any questions?
Board?
No.
So that rezoning piece that um is that like a non-issue, really?
That is Jim Asensio's property, yeah. So he has a piece of property next to his business, it's bacon. The front two thirds is C one, the back third is residential two. And he's proposing to rezone that back section to C one, so the whole piece would be C one. And that's the piece of property that the potential for the sell down.
Does that, yeah, that back line, does that go all the way back to the backside of metal yard? Is it all the way through?
No, when you come down metal yard, there's residential lots
Yeah.
to the east.
Okay.
And his primary butts that. And that's why originally when that subdivision went in there off metal yard, they made those back sections of the commercial residential kind of to create a buffer.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, that's our front lead to the website. You can uh take a look at what's gonna be uh there. Uh I know we got a planning commission notes, but they're not approved yet, so they can't go on onto the site until they're approved. But I could read that and that's where it's at in the GTPC. Mike Rogers does a copious amount of panic dumps.
Indeed.
Uh and uh and I say that, but you know, we're lucky to have that kind of copious notes to be able to follow, so. Jason, thank you, and I want to tell the audience, obviously I've been here a little over sixty days. The job that he does every day here and the amount of volume that he that he takes care of in and out of here and the knowledge of the system is uh fantastic and I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
He's uh been a very cooperative uh employee at the township and does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take five.
Last, that's just when we speak, right?
Yep, but every time you speak, you know what I mean?
A surprise, you're not in here. I didn't know what his schedule was gonna allow. Always misses you guys, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I know.
Next item is uh the Blue Report, uh Jim Barlow.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Um just hey, giving you a quick workshop update for today. And the meeting's schedule we have set for this next coming fiscal year is basically every other month, uh we look at, you know, what business we had to take care of. The real need to continue to meet every month. We may end up having a special meeting for some uh business that has to be immediately addressed, some contracts or something that appears. We did that. Um in the budget, uh we put together a budget. We talked to Jim Anderson a little bit about it, um as far as the process. And he says, you know, really, we're in our infancy, so it's pretty much, you know, a wish list of what we'd like to do to proceed. In our budget, we expect to spend about two point six million this year. And that will keep us on a reasonable track and at bidding uh and be able to bid and get all the documents together in sometime in twenty twenty six. The next thing we did, the resolution of the participation rules, basically meant with the townships. Uh the sewer update is included. We wrote that for the Gazette and some of the highlights are, um Congressman Jack Burman has been successful in securing a significant community grant for the fiscal year twenty twenty four of one million dollars. And we're grateful for that. That will help us with a lot of finding and deciding what we need to do this year. Um just in that light, we are continuing to to research and aggressively go after other grants, some smaller, some larger. But we will continue to do that and remember to uh move the project forward and also to make it as supportive as possible, so. We're glad for that. As far as the grant, we had we've already done some training. Uh we've got a great grant team, I assume you can see that. Um but we do, we need a ton of training. They had a training session the other day, I assume, and they'll have another one coming up. Um as we continue to investigate more and more grants and as I heard some thought, there is a lot of uh detail that needed to be done. And at some point, I'm sure we're gonna need administrative help and individual record keeping and maintain compliance, so. In the future, we'll probably be looking for staff, some sort of contracted. Will I continue to do that? Um working forward, um the other things I don't send there, we continue to work on the treatment site. I think, of course, the drilling is done. They've taken a lot of samples now there to fair hydro report cement for the permit for that location. Uh we also had the aerial photography flown and uh and the control work is done. The next big thing will be the mapping, which is uh probably about four hundred fifty thousand dollars per state. Uh yeah, just I mentioned, I added the federal community grant funding item, it's listed there, so we have some type of intention. As I mentioned, we're continuing to talk to townships, I mean foundations. We've talked to legislators, we've talked to Eagle, D N R. Clean water people, U S P, so we'll continue to keep them in the boost and working forward. Any questions?
Well, if there's any questions, you're good. At all?
Maybe four.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Susan, see you back. Turn your mic off, please. Say hello.
Um I sent an email a week ago and put some materials in the box, so I don't have to apologize today, but I will talk briefly off of that. I wanted to give you these materials and some of the pictures showing some of the um products that we're thinking about adding to the park. So the the majority of what I'm gonna talk about today is the next steps for the execution of the recreation passport grant that is being used to make improvements to the park, Carlos, the township park. It's a pretty complicated process, requires a good amount of engagement with the D N R. And that's one of the stages we're at right now. I'm working with the engineering firm to create the specifications to go up to bid. On these particular pieces with a a large piece, medium-sized piece of play equipment, a spinner piece and the bathroom renovations. So I'm hoping to get those pieces of paperwork. There's about seven different documents that need to be uploaded into the D N R site. Then the D N R needs to approve all that before we can actually release it to bid. It will go out to statewide bids through these large construction bidding websites where people know to go receive things like this. And um once I get those specifications too, I would like to uh maybe work with you, Michelle, in getting a notice in the resort or two. And I know you have to do that by Monday in order to get in Thursday, so I'm not sure which week that will be. Um okay, so we'll also put an ad for this uh construction bid information in the resort. And the timeline that I gave you on that email dated May thirtieth was Susan's best case, if all the stars align, how I would do it, if I was in control. But um even since that time, talking to various people I'm talking to, these dates are gonna be moved by at least a week. Uh one key one that I wanted to say is I think the bid specs will be open. Uh probably, I'm working for June twentieth to July ninth. And at the end of that, Michelle will have the bids delivered here to the township and you and I and the rep from Korean will open those. Okay, so the um the bid specs include, as I mentioned, that play equipment and the bathroom renovation and I had uh included a little schematic of our recommended bathroom layout that I think I've talked to most of you about. There's other smaller elements that we're going to include in the park plan that we're just going to single source or by ourselves and that are things like the um expanding the fencing. Um getting additional bench and A B A picnic table because I want to get those from bench lease, so. And because the price is not exorbitant, though, there is a way to allow single sourcing for that, so. We're working on those smaller items too. And that's the big project going on right now with the park. I did want to mention I did want to mention a couple other pieces of business that the committee is working on. Uh, the out at this park here, the, we didn't receive our fourth net, all that's set up great. And we're looking to buy a little bit of equipment to manage the course for in particular, a large Swedish, like both industrial Swedish. It's only going to be a few hundred bucks. I'm just going to tell you that, you know, we'd like to get that and we'll leave it out there by the court, whoever needs to do that prior to the play can do that. Uh, I talked to Larry once a week or so ago about making some progress on getting that security camera up there for which we got the park plan grant. What we'd like to do is install electricity first because the Honor Security gave us the quote to put the camera on the building and it's really too low and too far from the porch. So what we'd like to do is put the camera on a post that is right there in the corner of the courts. In order to do that, we have to have some electricity drawn to the post. Once that electricity is in place, then Honor can come up and do that. So I was working a little bit with Larry on that. I'll follow up with him. One other last item is the issue that we're going to be working on this summer. Updating our five-year rec plan so we can have that in place with the DNR and continue to, uh, request grants through them. Uh, an interesting piece of that is getting public input and I'm, I'm working to have a survey available to the community in July. That will be an online survey and we'll advertise it several different ways. And then what I'd also like to do is have an in-person meeting, probably in August, that I would like to be a Garrish Township meeting, not just a Perks meeting. So I'd like it to be Garrish Township is seeking comments and input. We're going to have a give and take discussion, update on what's going on with the park. And we can use some of that feedback into our five-year plan also. So as we get closer to August, I'll request that we have like a special meeting date sometime in the evening and allow for that. Other kind of other little things are going on. We, we're meeting right now. Our perks committee is meeting about every three weeks. So our next meeting is going to be the, uh, June 25th. We just met yesterday. Any other thoughts or questions? I'm sorry, Jim.
I have none. Your stuff is always so complete. Yeah, biggest thing that I heard today though, from your email back on May 30th is it looks like June 20th to July 9th timeline moves.
Is, is more realistic for the bid window, yes.
Okay, and you'll have to just keep in touch with us if we need special meeting to quickly commit and approve something.
That's a, that's a great point.
We can do that. Just make sure you just keep in contact with us about that. Remember, it's an 18-hour window for us to do that. And but realistically speaking, the, uh, the longer notice we have, the better for everybody's schedule that's on.
That, that's a great point. Once we see those bids and hopefully the lowest bidder is the one we want. Otherwise, we need to go some hoops through the DNR to pick somebody who's not the lowest bidder. But, um, we have to, yeah, so soon after that, um, I'll probably want to call a quick meeting to get you guys to sign off and get the DNR to sign off. Then we can award, continue with that contracting and do a kickoff meeting. And once we do kick off with that vendor, I'd like to proceed most quickly with the play equipment. So that we're going to have one contractor, the, the construction contractor. He will actually sub contract out to the play equipment guy. But I've been in touch with all the play equipment people in the state. There's three that will be on it. Um, so I'm hoping we can just move quickly on that piece and get a piece of play equipment this summer, even though the construction, I'm hoping for the bathroom construction to be done before the winter, but we might want to hold off our walkthrough checklist, uh, till the spring and then do our final sign off and reimbursement through DNR in the spring.
Perfect. Sounds good. Uh, thank you for all your work and, uh, for all you did to note, note this rec committee is probably the most active rec committee gathered together for the township. Susan's very organized, um, and that helps. And I want to respect whatever timelines you need because having been involved in projects before, timelines are important to the people that are directing those. And the board needs to respect that and make sure we're moving forward. So appreciate you. Thank you. Question?
So we'll have to make a motion to accept what the recommendations are? I, I don't think so.
No.
I don't require any sign off. The DNR doesn't require any sign off to agree on these bid specs. Um, I will, I, I, you know, Larry will have to check off in the DNR website that he's aware and that he authorizes this. Okay. But I don't need a signed resolution or motion or anything. You guys, maybe when we get to awarding the contract.
Well, I had to order to say the actual spend and analysis and sense out of that particular line is when we will need to be involved. Really do appreciate, though, I, I, all of you that, the, the backend associate gives us for very.
I, I, I do have one question back for you, and that is, you know, regarding the line items. And I've heard other people talk about their budgets and using the right code for reimbursement and such. I would really like to have the opportunity to talk to whoever it is appropriate to talk to, to understand the Park's budget. Um, there is this idea that we should be planning for the future for some of our maintenance issues. And I, I would like to understand how that code works, where the money is aligned, and so I can spend it properly too. Anything to talk to you?
Yeah, it's a very simple piece, but I do, and, and, and my only comment on Parks and Recs is just remember when you build it, they will come. And when they come, we got to figure out what's the legacy cost will be in the long run. And, uh, budgets are carryover, if you will, there. And, uh, we need to be mindful of those things. Those are the things that suddenly pop up and cause more emotional distress because, because a bench is gone, somebody busted it up, you know, those kinds of things. So it's, it's never the big stuff, the beautiful planning and buildings and things like that. It's always those little things. So, yeah, very good. You can see Michelle. She, she will give you that, what those are. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're on to number 10. Number 10, uh, folks, I gave you all policy, uh, drafts, uh, the, the number one, there were pre, three previous stuffs and some of it's before I got here. It actually had been approved by the board, but never got put into the policy manual. I picked those up and, uh, proposing that we, uh, approve those on Tuesday. So, uh, in the, also there's a policy there that's new and it's a deletion of a cash-in program. Uh, here at the township, which stems from back in, uh, well, prior to 2011. And, uh, we no longer have to be employees or eligible for those programs. And so there's no longer the necessity to keep that in our records or otherwise, because no one, it's only going to cause confusion if we do. So it makes sense to me anyways to delete them. So I want to, uh, have the, have the board, uh, unless you have objections this morning, board members that are here. Um, I'd like to put those on the agenda for, uh, the completion of that number 10. We've tried to develop the double check system, just so you know, here where Michelle and I get to double check each other as to what we thought we heard at the work session and what needs motions for Tuesday. We created this agenda because we had a short turnaround window here, especially this one we have uh, for our, our agenda and get it out posted for the folks. So that's what I'm knowing. And so is. Wait, okay, very good. But that's what we need. It's redundancy is what we need. So, uh, okay. The next thing on the agenda is the, if one of the board member has a comment about that. The next thing on the agenda is a McKee, Jeremy McKee, day one when I got in office had contacted me about what I call an old unresolved issue, at least for what would the board do or not do? Uh, I'd like to give the man an answer. Uh, he owns a piece of property that is, that is back in the boot docks, if you will, there. Uh, and he's had an organic problem. People steal garbage cans. And then, then he goes to put it, uh, attach it to a speed limit sign with a, or a, not a speed limit, a regular regulatory sign. And with a, with a, a lock and key and chain and whatever. And the road commission says, no, 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 can't do that. And so they tell me can't do that. And so look, uh, he's just asked and it's like 237 some odd thousand, but it's a bigger issue than that, I've been told by previous board members. Um, and it looks like it could be a slip or slope. So if you allow him the ability to usurp his position of trash pickup in your, your, uh, assessing, if you will, in your, your village sanitation, then you potentially open the door for anyone that's seasonal or otherwise to come up and say, hey, listen, I think I, I'd just not like to pay that 200 and some odd dollars. But yet, maybe continue to use the service because how is GFL now? I did do the diligence on it and I, uh, looked at the, the GFL contract. And I don't see anything in the contract that says specifically that they must service all marshals within the township. That's an informational piece on the due diligence. And then the rest of it becomes what I call anecdote stories about previous boards that said, hey, I don't think this is a good idea. I just would like to give the fellow a, uh, the courtesy of letting him know where the board's posture might be. And, uh, so I, I think truly I'd like to put that on the agenda for Tuesday and either give the gentleman an upper, a down, and a proper, uh, a proper response to his question as a citizen. Any opposition to that? Will we get forward to Tuesday?
And I said, we, we, we did discuss it as a board and where it was left was, um, um, to be followed up with the supervisor was to follow up with him. Um, and for all I know, that didn't happen. And maybe he's just trying to end with new person.
Yep, the new candidate building. Yep, got it. Okay, so we're going to move that forward. A lot more discussion about that. But, uh, it's, it certainly could be a slip or slope. I could see it. So number 12, uh, the next one up is, um, moving the Marina office manager to part-time status for a seasonal employee. So the, 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 the gist of this is legitimately is seasonal employees usually they're April 15th, October 15th variety. And unfortunately, Marina business, uh, first couple of months, uh, over the January, February, that kind of thing. They, they move these, uh, these sites and, and track the money for paying the, the sites at the Marina. Essentially, they're literally out of due work, but it's outside the confines of the seasonal definition by law. And we can't continue, uh, a practice apparently that was here. Um, unfortunately, where we pay it, we, 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 our, this kind of banker time and then we pay it all at once for the seasonal starts. Um, unfortunately, that's just simply not acceptable. Uh, so the motion that I'm looking for on, uh, this Marina office manager is we need to make her the regular part-time status so that she can come in in the winter and get paid properly in the winter, which she's earned the money.
It's for the position, not just she.
Yeah, she currently sits in it, but it's, yes, it's for the position, for the future, so that it is properly done, um, properly oversighted and, um, not, um, loosely done what. Anybody got any comments for it otherwise? Again, that's just some of the business processes that I'm, you know, picking up on and moving forward on. Um, so we get that you're right. Okay. Um, number 13. I can take my note here. Okay. Very good. Going at it. Number 13 on your agenda is review the proposal to amend the Garrish Township Park District, uh, building. Uh, here are the three, section two J, uh, of the ordinance, number seven two per Attorney H's communication and suggested verbiage. This is the origin of Jim, this is your language, uh, to get every, all of the ordinances on the same page regarding special events, potential, if there was out potential alcohol. Uh, also with that as well. Um, and I just, we just received the communication from Attorney H's last night, I believe, on my email, that the, the actual approval could also be made of the special permit um, document that we created so that in the future, I guess, if somebody wanted to apply for special permit, they could. Uh, the document now exists and worked with Jason's office on that to try and get something that looks simple, but yet covers the township's needs and proper liability coverages and that kind of thing. If somebody wanted to have another event in the future. Um, so anyways, uh, I think we'll never have any issue with, uh, my proposal. And then, uh, then also we need to put the approval in that motion as well of the special permit approving that. Then my understanding, have we said we have to do an advertisement on the event? Yeah, 30 days. And so 30 days, we need to do that effective the very next day so that we're not running into time problems for the current thing that the fire department brought up for the 75th anniversary. Uh, and it'll be another thing that we, that we accomplish afterwards. Any questions, board? Jim? Uh, did I, did I know? Were you copied on that?
Language.
All right, I, I'll show you off that, uh, that copy of what, what we're doing. There, and, uh, if you will, to make sure that we address the issue, okay? Just for your records, okay? Uh, on to number 14, uh, we need to discuss at our, in our last meeting in which we approved our Michigan Township participating, uh, umbrella plans. For insurance, uh, we had merely a discussion briefly about cyber insurance. So following through with, uh, Paul Olson, he did send us the cyber insurance package. And, um, I have it here if you want it.
No, I said there it is. When I answered, before I answered, it wasn't there it is.
So the question becomes, it looks like it's about another 1,400 bucks to our, our insurance package. What was said, folks, for the audience is, uh, we read about it every day where places have been packed. And then come up with social security numbers and the like. And it's, it's not just a, oh, well, it happened. It becomes a, who handles the damage control after the fact when it happens? And, uh, what you do about it? And then, of course, the insurance associated with it, so it's not in your budget because you suddenly have to take all the records that you have. And, uh, you, you have to do some things legally with that. This coverage, if we were to purchase it, would, uh, put that right directly with the insurance company and the cyber insurance folks here from the municipal underwriters. And, um, I, I have to tell you, I, I came from an uber secure environment next door at the police department to what I would call a not so tightly restricted, uh, here at the general township. Obviously, there's some records they have that we don't that simply get dictated by the state and feds. So the question becomes the board is whether or not we want to entertain doing this for the additional cost of the, I. So we would have to decide, we're in the 0-5,000 population. Uh, and so we're looking for limits of liability. We have 100,000, 250,000, 500,000 or a billion. Uh, the 100,000, the lowest one is $150, uh, half a billion is 1,389. And then, of course, there's varying degrees of difference. And so I got this together. It was really, it's a request for you folks. I, it's up to you. Uh, we're only have three fists this year today. I'm a little uncomfortable to moving it forward to Tuesday, but we, so I think we need also to, as a note, to carry this forward to July's work session so that all five board members can at least weigh in verbally on this. It's going to be required spending of additional money. And of course, obviously, um, the always the question of where does that come from, uh, in there? So are you comfortable with paying away that? Okay, very good. I'm not making for any copies for everybody from July. She better keep them. All right, thanks. Thank you much. Is everybody in the audience having any experience with cyber insurance? Or does that cyber factor, anything? No? Okay, just wondering if somebody could share. Very good. Moving right along, uh, number 15, another. Very good, number fifteen, in other words, is one of the, another policy drafts that, um, I sent out to the board. As you know, we, for months, they've been talking about what do we do with electronic streaming? Are we doing it? What, what meetings are we doing them in? How are we doing them? Uh, are we YouTubeing after the fact? Are we, what, what are we doing? Well, first off, we needed a policy for electronic streaming, so I put together a policy for streaming, uh, from the policy manual. And then, of course, as a follow-up, a summer last month, uh, there's been some lacking definitions for a great many years about employee definitions within a policy manual. So there's a salary exempt and a non-exempt definitions, those are merely nothing more and nothing less than what you would find looking at either IRS or FLSA, uh, Fair Leadership Act. And, uh, so those are definitions I, I proposed others. And then there's another one that I was original author on, the donation of lead, um, and, uh, so it looks like, uh, from the mission, I should execution, it works well. Um, however, I neglected to maybe broaden or define that family term a little bit better. So I shipped that out to the board, um, so for a, a potential amendment to that particular policy. And, um, what we have to do is we're in a time right now where people are intercutting, um, and it's becoming more and more difficult. And the policy says immediate and, uh, some people, an uncle might be immediate because they're the only ones left and they're living longer and they eat thicker taking pieces. So what this does is it does open it up a little bit so that employees may be able to be considered for this donation of lead. Remember, the donation lead policy is only for fellow employees to donate annually by basically set by what you recall, uh, which I did on my way out the door to one through the police department. Um, and, uh, so literally I just, uh, we might wanna open that up just a touch so that the, uh, other employees are the, obviously the end user, if you will, whether they wanna donate or not. So any comments on that particularly, guys? No? Okay, very good, I'd like to roll that one forward toward approval. Next one, uh, that's sort of a follow-up, uh, to the question of, uh, Mike and Natalie over here represents Redline Media. And, uh, obviously after the, uh, the electronic streaming, uh, we fully intend to do that with a policy and we fully intend to provide it to the, to the meetings that, uh, that we define, uh, within the policy. And, um, so Redline Media, I asked them to put together a service contract and they did so, I provided it to you. And that would be my suggestion that we move forward with that contract, uh, so that we have a presence and, and not who's gonna run the machine. So we're having the equipment and I think we need to supply what we need to supply, uh, out there. And we're gonna have to fight about it again because nobody thought about it, they have the time to budget, so we need to, we need to do that. In my thoughts, uh, is there anybody, uh, comfortable with rolling that forward for approval? Those other board members have had this for a long time. We do.
Moving at the last.
Just so everybody knows, I'm just gonna read it out loud so there's no confusion. Here's township work sessions, the first Thursday of every month, nine in the morning. Here's township board meetings, second Tuesday of every month at seven P M. Here's township finding commission, um, and he needs to have a clarification from us if we sign this contract with them of the frequency pieces, so that's yet to be, I guess, worked on. I think I'm just gonna put maybe you in touch with, uh, our finding commission chair. Being here, some parks and wrecks, um, we're gonna, uh, apply if we're going to make that available to them, although I know yesterday you probably didn't know about it, uh, but in the future, if this is past Tuesday night, Susan, then you could expect that someone will be here to manage your, your stuff.
Is it then required that I will have that or can I not have Redline here and still use the?
Well, I would say if it's in the contract here, um, Mike, you remember putting that in there of various other meetings or is it wasn't determined by the?
It was determined by the.
So I guess what I'm hearing is is no, you don't have to, um, but if you do, I will fully value finding. That's a, that's a legacy cost for you to have paid for that. Looking at Susan, yeah, out of your parks and wrecks budget. Cause it's just like it is out of our budgets or otherwise, if it's special to just one area, that's the area the budget comes from. So that's a, if, if you did use them, it's forty-five bucks an hour, those meetings, um, that would get charged up appropriately to those line items in the budget, we'll explain it later.
My question is then, because if Parks and Wrecks is listed on here, then I have to use him and have to pay for that.
No, you do not, you just, you don't have to, but if you do.
If I do, that's how it works.
You, then that's how we will recover these budget centers is, that's why we have budget centers, they're supposed to pay for themselves, uh, and you're supposed to budget those appropriately. We're showing, say, we are, Barry Joe is your, your contact. And so when it comes to budget time, um, I'll be sending you here on a mission to figure out where you folks are at.
Yeah.
Uh, so we had, uh, there's, uh, those are the types of board reviews, again, those are the, uh, clarified with you, okay? Um, and, uh, obviously, if, if there's something that pops up, special meetings or whatever, any provisions in there for us to have, it'd be there, so. This is just a formality, uh, I don't even call it a contract, it's more of an agreement between the two. Um, and, and, uh, you know, obviously it has typical language in it and, uh, also, um, but the only thing we probably ought to make sure is in here that it, oh, there is, there is a, uh, this clarifies contract is additionally for one year and the other subject to review. And then either party can terminate within sixty days or ten hours. Thank you. Uh, board members, Tuesday night, there. There you go.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, very good, we're on to number seventeen. And that is the property for colonizers, this is the, what I call the usual, when the, uh, the treasurer's office, uh, lets us know that we have a certain right, um, at a gen, at a fair market value, of course, that did change a little bit. So they weren't at a different lower price, now it's fair market value multiplied by two. If we'd like to have a stake in a black squirrel court, which is one that you have listed. Um, some of these don't have addresses because they simply are vacant lots. Actually, so they're all vacant lots, one was Black Squirrel Eagle Avenue Roosevelt, uh, at the corner of St. Louis. There, you'll probably drive by and you can see yellow signs in the county that says they're coming up for public auction, uh, so I need to know, uh, uh, while we need to put this on here so that we can let the county know whether we have any interest in any of one of them or all thirty or two or whatever.
I know.
Would you like to have the review so that we can vote out on Tuesday night? Of course, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good, then that's a Tuesday night, Lynn. And, 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 and. Uh, number eighteen, uh, this comes up every so often, I remember across my years here, about national flood insurance. And, um, we, we literally apparently are in some type of a floodlight here, uh, according to the feds, despite the fact that we're twelve hundred and some odd feet, uh, above sea level. And, uh, so, but it came in and, um, this is something that we, we have to give feedback on. Or excuse me, if we want it, we gotta opt, you opt into it, otherwise there's an assumption you opt out of it. And so I just hit it before the board, I think it's important that we, oh, that we have a motion to either we're in it or we're out of it. Um, it, it, if you're in it, you can include in your zoning organs, building codes, da-da-da, or a standalone floodway management regulation. And so there are provisions of the state and even laws that authorize community to enact and enforce land use regulations based upon if you opt into this thing, you have to submit an application to opt in, uh, on this. And there is no federal law for us to, uh, to join this. However, if we had a big flood, they haven't helped us either putting our residents, so that's the big piece. So, uh, we, we, we really need to decide that we're either applying or we're not applying and give, and just so we have a direction.
You know, the cost. Is this, um,
So it's in.
The cost.
I don't know, I think there's a cost once you get into it, for the every homeowner, um, that would, they would then have to have that officially on their homes and you'd be passing that cost directly to every one of your homeowners. And they would, they have to be at your homeowner package because it's a federal program. And I'm sure they'd like to have another pot of money so that every time a hurricane happens in Florida, we all donate to the cause. That being said, I don't wanna be that flippant about it because I don't know, they had a hundred year flood down in Midland. You know, that there's people lost to leave our homes and that kind of thing, so. I don't wanna take it flippantly, I do know that in the past, I know at least twice that I sat the audience and the board, the previous boards have not chose to participate.
I'm not ready to make a motion of any kind on this, just, yeah, I'm just not, I mean, I don't feel educated enough.
With Midland until July, is that what you're asking for? Cause I'm not gonna say we're not gonna do something, shut it off and forget about it.
No, no, that's what I'm saying is that I don't.
Will you make a note about a note, Lynn, that that moves to July's work session for a whole more time for individual board members to really digest this? And I think it's important, uh, you know, to realize that the decision that you may have made place, play at undue cost on homeowners insurance with floods.
Well, I think you said, cause Lake is a perfect example, you know, that, that makes it a little bit more real of, you know, you don't think that kind of thing can happen, but it can.
Well, they should, they're downstream. Anybody, has anybody else in the audience ever had, uh, I mean, you got a thought process, Jim or Bob?
Yeah, I have dealt with it a few times, a lot of times it's building codes, so you have to meet if you're within the floodplain. And then also the insurance company can come and if your property is identified in the, in a floodplain, even like basically everything else around the lake would be identified in the floodplain along many of the lot, the creeks. It's usually if there's like, I can't remember if it's like a one or two square miles upstream, um, water is coming down towards you. So Cut River, all along the Cut River, and all the swamps would be considered in the flood. And oftentimes, we had to go off and certify whether your house was in the floodplain or not if you wanted to be excluded from, from flood insurance. And flood insurance is quite expensive.
And that's, that, my initial dive into it says flood insurance is really expensive. And so I mean, insurance law now.
It was, must have been a piece a decade ago, uh, the county, I think, approved a final map that was submitted. So you might wanna check for that because I know with the road provision, we got a copy of it, uh, to see if any of our properties would, would have been in the plain. And so I, I know Old Lake had a pretty thick side area that was in a technical floodplain. And then so those townships had to add, uh, to put them in so that homeowners could buy that insurance to be covered. But I don't remember anything around Higgins, but that's not to say there was something there, but I think most of the floodplain information I saw was around Old Lake. And, uh, somehow Saint Helmut.
So the hazard mitigation plan that was presented us quite a little bit ago, if you will, there only identifies one dam, uh, in our, it's not anywhere near us and it's a small dam, uh, of what they call at risk, truly at risk. Uh, so that's down in the southern part of the county, I believe, uh, is that down by Wolf Lake or something? Yeah. Yeah.
It might be removed now, came like the, yeah, I was gonna remove that, I think it's gone. It, it was the flooding for Wolf Creek and then it gave it loose after some repairs were done to it, then it gave it loose.
Yep.
And, uh, damn near knocked out the highway and those twenty-seven bridges and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's right.
The DNR just said, we're just not gonna put it back in, there's not gonna be a flooding, cause I think they bought that property back up in there with the dam. And they said, we don't wanna have a dam anymore, we wanna control it. So I think it's just a creek now, we're totally through that property and runs out to the highway, but yeah, so that's probably not on there. There was a map.
Okay.
On footprints in the county.
Okay.
And it showed, I think this, from my memory has been a while, I think it was just strictly along sort of the southern shore, seemed like.
Okay.
So maybe Rust County, that township has a barrier potentially, so, and then they had to decide, are they gonna be in it or not?
Okay, sounds cool, thanks for the tip on that, really appreciate that, Dave.
Yeah, um, I'm not so sure Higgins Lake has any of the risks that are associated with the flood. We're certainly not in a notion with hurricanes, we're not Midland, we're, it's a man-made situation, we're the top of the watershed. Tell, look at the risk factors that could make us think we should have flood insurance. That's all I'm saying. Appreciate, don't think that.
Appreciate that, the board, I'll chase, I'll chase that map too, cause I think that, that, that's something that is tangible. Did you, yes?
Federal Emergency Management Association Authority has maps online. Device thing, FEMA.
Well, this is the National Flood Insurance Program and let me see if I see those wonderful things, FEMA in there.
FEMA.
FEMA, yeah. So obviously FEMA seems to think we might be in a floodplain.
Well, like I said, they consider anything that might be impacted by.
Yeah, I know, I get it, yeah.
It can be on a river or a lake and or anything.
So we'll table that until the work session and in the meantime, I'll try and get a hold of, if I get a hold of this map and do a little bit more investigation into, uh, and, and what Dave Hall said as well, uh, out there, I appreciate all the insights, thanks for the help, audience, uh, so we'll, we'll look forward on that, but we're gonna hold that July. Uh, the last one, number nineteen, uh, was the review of the L forty twenty-nine form, uh, the tax rate request that we have to have, uh, back to the county by seven point four. Uh, I had the assessor review it, the assessor is good to go with it, um, and I think the document's probably ready. So we need it, we're gonna need a, a motion on Tuesday night for Michelle and I to sign that document. Um, and, and literally the two that are on it are what would be the, the police fire EMS and, or excuse me, police fire EMS, special assessment districts, but you gotta go with what you know, which is what the current village is now. And then we amend if August changes anything, and then we have to send the amendment to the county. And so that's a procedural piece, uh, so we need to have a motion to support that so we can move that along. And that is all I have on the agenda, someday I look up, maybe hoping to get these down by ten. Um, maybe we never will, I don't know, but I'm, I'm hoping and, and not two, two and a half, well, hey, we're down, yeah, time is being. So, uh, board members, do you have any, uh, final comments, uh, or notes or something?
I love that.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mary Jo and Michelle.
We were gonna talk about paper and the waste of it and how we're not gonna do the copies for the board needs.
Yeah, I, we were trying to get a streamlined as well, I was trying to save a few trees for God's sakes. We can't, we can't do what I'd like to do, which I hope to get in next year's budget, which is to provide a, a laptop for all the board members so that we're not killing all this paper up here. And then, because what happens in the process here is we give all this paper for the board work session and then Michelle turns around and has to do all this paper again and then put it attached to a brand new, uh, here uh, for Tuesday night on a quick turnaround and whatever, it's a lot of stress, a lot of iteration, not to. Uh for Tuesday night on a quick turnaround and whatever, it's a lot of stress, a lot of iteration, not to mention a lot of paper. So for board members, and unfortunately, there's only three of us here, but we'll explain to the other two. That we're 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 probably gonna cease to assist that extra packet piece. Uh they need to start staining that until we can maybe get something that can advocate for. A budget that might be able to advocate for some laptops so that it's all right here, we're not killing trees anymore. Um and then of course, obviously, those documents are always spoilt. The way they need to do, we'll try and get the public out their documents like normal we do. Um but to simply don't pay our 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 packets again for board members is just, it seems redundant, doesn't seem like good business practice. And uh so we're we're gonna try and terribly uh tough that up, anything else, Michelle?
The election's coming. We're gonna start getting out the clerk's offices next week, we just have to have ballots and and start things happening already.
Oh, exciting.
Yeah.
Uh so uh for me, as a final note, um I am beginning to work just on a a project and I I don't. We may have to wait until next year on a rollout or something, but I've been working with um a company called Text Supply Gov. T E X T, my M Y gov G O V, which is a web based uh company. And we're relevant in application or an app, like we have over at the police department to communicate with the public. And this was a web based directory, we defined it in the background and uh so you're sitting there and you don't know something about something and you. You know, gotta get time to go to the town hall or something, that you know, that kind of thing, you literally can opt into this program. And so that you'll, there'll be some freehand things, but there's also a reexchange going directly to people that are responsible for what you're asking at the at the township hall. Uh it's immediate, I've tested it, um so far, I'm thinking uh. At some point, I'll have the company do a Zoom uh presentation for the audience, the full board, those kinds of things. Um it's like anything else, if you wanna communicate with the public, um it's sometimes it's a pricey venture. But uh it's for it, it's basically because we're, we get to take advantage of our lower population numbers based on census, not based on what. It it basically ends dates us throughout the year. Um and uh it's it's it would cost us a legacy item of four thousand dollars a year just to maintain it. And basically, there's a widget that goes onto your website as well, right on the page page. And you can click on it, you can opt in by saying hi to nine one six seven nine, whatever the number is. And it will uh it it is just a very horrifying project or a possibility there and as well as. There's a way for us, we can configure it ourselves in the backside of it, what's more important, to give you an example, um we get it, we get. So many questions, people walking in to the front desk and then it suddenly it takes an hour of their employee's time to. Sit there and discuss them to do whatever, but the answer is very simple, um and uh and and can be handled quickly, if you will. So it's a speedier process. Now, listen, some people may not wanna do text, that's fine, we'll still have our website, we'll have our Facebook pages. Um it's a way for us, also it's push notification, so it's a way for us to push stuff out. Meaning if there's suddenly an eighteen hour uh special meeting, we can push that out via text. The company itself, that four thousand dollars, does all this purchasing with the uh. Um for all of the zip coded area that you want to push out to, so we have to look at four eight six five three. Maybe a four eight, whatever on the other side and the and and uh anything that I don't, we have to identify those. They'll purchase those um and that the additional lot of those, they'll go out to every one of those folks and you can either opt in or you can opt out of it. Um more to come, I guess what I'm saying, this is not something I'm throwing down everybody's throat. I do intend at the June or the July meeting to at least introduce the 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 copies of the what it looks like, but there's. The animal control license pieces, there's just a myriad, we can put out things that are would be hidden, like Spencer Billings as well. Um you know, we right on top of it, I don't have it in front of me, but we talked about four or five things. And uh but I'll get that out to the board, uh snowballs rush for anybody on this, but. I'm just looking at future communications, seamless with our community, try and meet them on every forum I could possibly meet them on. Um cause there's nothing more exhausting as a political member for somebody to say, I didn't know. I mean, it's it's just almost raises blood pressure just simply with the words and so I wanna do everything that we can do. Because there's nothing, it should be transparent, everything, and I'm committed to that, so this definitely I word, that's that's a common. Um and it isn't necessarily now right away because of budget, again, I'm still trying to get a handle on. Where this, where it is, what what we've done, what was done, certainly before I got here, but. Anyways, that's my update and then uh go and see back, you're out there and uh I think you're by only, are you by only Zoom?
Yeah, I am, yes, and um I don't have any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity to attend the meeting uh virtually and keep up with what's going on. It's always particularly exciting to me to hear the Parks and Rec report.
My better deal is I haven't just wondered, did you, you think you hear that at home three times too or no?
Uh no, I don't usually hear the rehearsals, no.
You know, I get that impression, I think she's the wrong gal, I really.
Oh, sure.
Sure the talented, now I know why you're successful, right?
Yeah, I'm just hanging on for the ride.
Alright, very good, very good, is there anybody from the audience that wants to have any closing uh comments on the. On on our stuff here today and certainly what you heard and I've been very transparent with you, what we intend to bring forward on Tuesday night. That's what's gonna be out at the website and we'll be out in uh likely Facebook uh uh as I wrestle with meta business. Uh that is just horrific on Facebook, um just simply trying to change a picture this morning for God's sake. And still, I don't think it took, nonetheless, uh anyways, anybody out there, um anybody wanna. Uh stand up, announce anything for yourselves or otherwise, I mean, all good, Mary, Mary, Mary Ellis.
Hi, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Mary Ellis, I am running for treasurer, I am the next election. Some of you may know my husband, he's Officer John Ellis, um hopefully, if you can know, if you know.
In a good way, yeah.
Um but I just wanted to introduce myself and thank everyone for um everything you all do and for all of your kind submissions. And as a resident, I certainly appreciate all of it and the hard work everyone does and the time that it takes to make it a little bit better.
I'll stand, if I might as well.
Are you standing? Oh, I got that all the time, I thought I dished it all for a change, you sure like one of the older people in the community, shorter than me.
No, that's in school more days.
I have that.
No, my name is Kim Morley, I think most of you in this audience will probably already know, but I am running to be and serve as your next county commissioner in the second district. That is Garris Township and it's against Township, so I'll be at some of the other meetings as well, I have cards if you wanna give me a shout, so thank you.
Thank you and and welcome and I'm glad to see you here, I appreciate it. Uh Tim, do you wanna counter?
Uh yeah, I'm running against her.
Okay. I I didn't, I didn't.
I wanna make an announcement here, just in front of her, no matter what happens in August, uh we're gonna be better off.
Nice, alright, very good, I think we have no further, let's uh call, uh can I get a motion to adjourn at eleven twenty three? Alright, group, supported by the chairman, any further discussion, all those in favor, say hi. Hi, or is the same, Mr. Currys, thank you all.